March 23rd, 2021. Today, we have three items before us. The first item is to have an item presented to us with the annual update on Truist Park and the Battery, and I believe we'll also be touching based on the Major League Baseball game that we are planning at the, towards the summer. So with them, Bill, if you can help kick off today's presentation, that'd be great. And do we have representation from the Braves here with us today?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, good to see you.
Okay. All right, thank you Chairwoman, Commissioners. Good afternoon. We just want to give you the 2020 year-end update for the Braves and the Atlanta Battery. So there's Truist Park as of today, and just remember, we went through the name change from SunTrust to Truist Park. I want to touch on a few slides real quick, just to give you some background information. When we did these original projections, this was the split. The county's portion of the 300 million was capped, and the Braves' portion for construction was set at 372, but it was not capped. So anything above and beyond 372 was on the Braves. And then, as we started this process back in 2013, we had our initial projections of what we believed the cost was going to be to cover the annual debt service. The number that I really want to call to your attention is the reallocation of existing revenues. This would be general fund taxpayer, or tax dollars, and it originally was projected at $8.67 million. As we went through this process, we were able to improve our rates on our borrowing, and we were able to finalize the deal at $6.4 million is what we projected. Again, this is just simply for debt service, and I want to show you kind of where we are today. But with that being in mind, I wanted you to take a look at this, is, as we're saying, $6.4 million, that is before we talk about the stadium capital maintenance contribution that the county makes of over $1.2 million, the circulator fee that we also contribute towards about $800,000, and the PD overtime with additional, about $900,000 on a normal year. So this was just debt service. So again, as we get to the actual numbers, you're going to see that we are far below the $6.4 million, including all of those other costs as well. So we'll just move on real quick. I want to give you some history here as well. If y'all remember, this was a vacant piece of land valued at $5 million in 2014. As of the end of the last assessment in 2020, it is now valued at 800, or sorry, $587 million. This is just the Battery. This is not the halo effect, this is just simply the Battery. The Battery itself, property values increased by over $35 million just from 2019 to 2020. But inception to date for through 2015 through this past calendar, or past fiscal year, the Braves have paid into the county $10.7 million, and they've also paid into the Board of Education $14.8 million over that period of time. So just reminder that the Board of Education had zero investment in this, so they are seeing a huge benefit. And one of the things that we also look at is that the impact to the Board of Education with not having school-aged children in the Battery and small families, there's really not an increased cost. So this is, this is something that is really impacting the entire county from the countywide services, as well as the Board of Education's positive, positive return on investments. Okay, so one of the areas that we haven't typically touched on, and this is something that we really kind of probably dropped the ball in the last couple of years, is to really talk about one of the other partners in this, is the Cumberland CID. So obviously, we've talked about the special service districts and how they've been impacted. But one of the areas that we've neglected to mention in the past is that the Braves have also paid in $3.9 million to the Cumberland CID since 2015, and this is all going back to be invested in the Cumberland CID for infrastructure. And you can see kind of what their gross digest has done. I do want to point out one thing, as you kind of move through that chart, you'll see positive increases until you get to 2019. There's a little blip on the radar, and this was a non-reval year for commercial properties within the CID. And we have had several properties that were being constructed for apartments, and those are not eligible to be on the digest of the CID. So they could have a piece of land that is commercial in nature, and as soon as it is greenlighted for apartment complex or something like that, it comes off the CID digest. So that's what you see there, is the little blip on the radar. We had several properties that would have been on the digest, but that are now being developed as multi-family apartment complexes, that those come off the digest for the CID in 2019. And then in 2020, we had our big commercial reval year for commercial properties in the CID, and you can see it's up almost 11 and 1/2 percent. Chairwoman, any questions?
Yes, sir. When you say that it greenlighted, are you talking about from a land use designation perspective, or when there's an actual building permit issued for?
I believe it's the permitting.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, and I know, I apologize, this is maybe a little hard to see for those of you in the back, but this is something we'll have on the county's website, and we'll get to communications for today, so that if you want to copy or definitely want to share that with everybody. So we kind of have some histories from 2015 through 2020. One of the areas that I want to point out, though, is this is the Cumberland Special Service District $3 room night, property taxes for the Special Service District, rental car, and hotel motel. All in, for those years, you're looking at $72-plus million that has gone back to the county's revenues. A lot of, and all of these are used to support the stadium debt service. So one of the areas that you'll note is if you look at 2020, obviously, nobody knew a pandemic was coming. We had no fans in stands, and obviously, hotels were very hard-hit by the pandemic. You can see those numbers are down dramatically. I want you to keep those in mind as we move through the slides, because we were able to hold the general fund's impact from 2019, where it was in 2019, to 2020, and not have a negative impact despite the pandemic. And we're also going to be able to do that through 2021 without having a negative, or adverse impact on the general fund as well. So, and that's primarily because of the Cumberland Special Service District 2 property tax increases that we have seen through the digest growth and some of the other revenues. So just wanted to call that to your attention as we move through these. A few other revenues that we collect is sales tax, obviously, that flows into our SPOS fund, liquor-by-the-drink, occupancy tax. But this just gives you a little bit unique breakdown of kind of the county's portion of those revenues over this three-year period, the Board of Education's portion, as well as the state's portion, and then the total. So over a three-year period, the county has received over 10-plus million, Board of Education $5.7 million, and the state over $24.2 million for an all-in total. We're at three-year period over $40 million. Okay. This is the slide that's probably the most telling. This is going to, we'll walk through all the expenses that are included in this, but you can see where we were at the peak. The 8.2 million is the all-in. That's, that's how much the general fund had to kick in at the, at the peak of this in 2017, but that includes stadium debt service, capital maintenance, PD overtime, circulator, the whole nine, and that's what it continues to be as we move through these. You can see the downward slide in this trend. Back in 2019, the board made it a priority to use some of the Cumberland Special Service District 1 funds to be a good partner with Cobb Travel and Tourism. That actually slowed this number a little bit. It would have been even lower. And we've continued that practice into 2020 as we move forward. So for example, in 2020, we gave over $900,000 to the, or to the Cobb Travel and Tourism. So that just gives you an idea of where those numbers shake out had we continued in that practice. But I know that was the board's priority to be partners with Cobb Travel and Tourism, to help promote travel and tourism throughout, throughout the area. Okay, so here's the more detailed broken-down version of this. You can see what the debt service is, and like I talked about, the stadium capital maintenance, public safety, pedestrian, and insurance. One thing to note, because we didn't have fans last year at games, the public safety line item is only $4,000. It's typically not. So that's, gives you not, there is a trade-off of not having fans. You do have that savings, because you didn't have fans down at the Battery versus when we'd normally have a full season. But on the other side, you also lost a lot of revenue as a result of that. So the all-in cost for fiscal, for '20 was 20, 24-plus million, of which the Braves paid almost $8.7 million of that through the, their required annual contributions and their property taxes paid to the general fund and the Special Service District. And this is just the Battery. This is not halo effect, this is simply Braves-only. So with that being said, the county was responsible for the remaining $15.4 million, and you can see how that breaks down. General fund was $4.5 million of that. Absolutely.
Thank you.
And again, please keep in mind, when we did this initial projections, we only talked debt service. This gives you the full picture and full cost of what we, what we contribute and what the cost is to the county each and every year, as well as what the Braves contribute. Very good. Thank you. Okay. So we've talked about how we pay the annual costs. These are positive impacts that have come out of the, of this partnership that are not eligible for the debt service or the stadium capital maintenance, or any expenditures related to the stadium. The fire fund received over $600,000, debt service $30,000, business license, and so on. So additional revenue to the county was just under $1.9 million. These are revenues that are going to other purposes. And the biggest one that I want to call to your attention is the SPOS numbers. Without ticket sales, it was down dramatically, but with that, the county still had one of the highest SPOS that's had, collection rate had in several years. So this number is typically a little bit higher as we have ticket sales that are, obviously, have SPOS associated with those. Okay? And with that being said, we also have the Board of Education, again, receiving additional benefits through SPOS collections, as well as property taxes. So they received over almost $5 million in 2020 through this Braves and through the Battery area. And then obviously, the state, $2.2 million, but an all-in additional benefits of over $9 million of revenues. So again, these aren't, are not being used to fund the debt service or any costs associated with the Battery. Okay, and at this point, I'm going to ask Mike to come up, and he's going to address some of the, these, these areas of public partnership. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you. Chairwoman, Cupid, could I make a quick comment to follow up on what Bill mentioned here? You know, I think when we look back at 2013, our collective public-private partnership always was focused on the mixed-use development. This was never about building a professional ballpark as a standalone facility. And, you know, recently, there's been more focus and attention on that. I know I've said over 100 times on behalf of our organization, those don't pencil out, you know, most of the time. And, you know, this has been now about a billion-one in private investment into the Battery, and we've always known, and I believe the leadership here has known, that's what was going to make financial sense, and as Bill continues to, on an annual basis, show and prove out, the fiscal impact is, is continuing to grow. We have another 300 million that's coming online this summer with Phase 2, and, you know, no one, no one really focuses too much on the halo effect, but the Cumberland area has continued to grow with, with obviously, development going vertical and thousands of new jobs, and we believe that the Battery's been a big catalyst for that. So we believe the future looks pretty bright, and that that's going to continue to produce great revenues for the county. I'd also just want to say, look, we're continuing to be incredibly appreciative and grateful for the support we get from the county and the leadership and Cobb PD. There's no one else better in the country, we believe, and that also helps make all of this work. So we're grateful for that to all of you, too. So just a little bit on Braves Care. You know, it's, it's through our Braves Foundation, trying to continue to be good stewards of utilizing our, our resources in order to have a positive impact on the community. This is just what focuses on our, our giving and the contributions to Cobb, and we continue to look at Metro Atlanta, the state of Georgia, and Braves country as a whole. So I'm not going to read all these, but these are a few of the programs that obviously are growing the game-based, educational-based, and continuing to, to provide families and kids an opportunity to, to be recipients of our, our resources. So the list on Braves Care is, like I said, it's pretty extensive. There's another slide, I believe, right?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
You got it.
The right one?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And, oops. And then we had, again, growing the game, county championships last year, 176 teams played in Cobb, had some pretty good economic impact as well, utilized the hotels, and that was obviously a little more challenging in 2020 than it was in the past, but those programs will continue to grow. One program that's not up there is, because of the pandemic, we were able to utilize our facility and our resources. I think we're up over 2 million meals now. I know a number of you have seen what we, our operation that we were doing at Truist Park to provide meals to families that were in need, based on the pandemic and loss of jobs and a whole bunch of other sad reasons. So, and our, our commitment to that program's continuing into 2021 as well. And then just a couple of things moving forward. 2020, we still, even through the pandemic, opened a number of new tenants. The tower has now topped out at 420 feet. We opened the new Aloft Hotel, which is doing actually extremely well right now, and we were able to announce moving Papa John's from Louisville, their headquarters from Louisville, Kentucky, to Cobb County here in our new Three Ballpark Center office. And then looking forward, we have a number of new tenants that will be opening this year, moving Tiss and Cruff and Papa John's. The total employee population's about 1,200 into Three Ballpark Center. We have obviously the All-Star Game and a global event. We believe it's the first probably global event that'll take place in North America that will have full-capacity crowds. So that's, obviously, will bring the attention of the world onto Cobb County. And then finally, the Silver Spot Theater. It's been sitting there for six months, ready for Hollywood to provide some movies, and that should happen in mid-May. And I didn't put that last bullet on there, but I sure hope that that happens as well. So. I think that's it, right, Bill?
Yes.
Any, any questions I can answer?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate the presentation. I believe, were we going to have an overview of what's going on with the MLB game?
Is that next on the slide?
No, no slides.
No. So you're obviously all aware of the All-Star Game that's taking place in July at Truist Park and the Battery and the surrounding area. As I just said, we believe it's probably the first global event that will take place in North America after the pandemic. There'll be over 160 countries that will broadcast the Monday Night Home Run Derby. I'm sorry, I should go back. It's a Sunday, the day, two events during the day are the Futures Game and the Celebrity Game, and then that night will be the first round of the Major League Baseball Players' Draft. And so those are all televised events. Monday is the Home Run Derby, which then kicks off the global television audience over 160 countries around the world. And then Tuesday is obviously the All-Star Game, same thing, 160 countries. I think there's 2,000, a minimum of 2,000 media representatives from, from a global, global journalists from all over the world. Obviously, we're building out an extensive compound. The events start at the Galleria, which we're grateful for the support, again, from the county and travel and tourism. Play Ball is an event for families. They will come from, obviously, we believe, all over the southeast. There'll be in excess of over 100,000 people over a five-day period. That'll start that Friday prior. We're, we're putting together a concert series at the Roxy and looking at some other places also around Cobb. Hotels, I think it's even difficult now to get a hotel room. So the, the impact, and again, there was some information, I believe, that got provided to you. Economic impact over the last 20 games ranges from $30 million up north of $100 million. And that was information that was provided to us from, from MLB. I can't tell you the methodology that was all used, they have their methodology, but we're pretty confident that there will be a huge global impact here again on Cobb and a pretty good return, not only directly but indirectly, and the focus of people are going to see what we've experienced here with the incredible place that Cobb County is. So feel pretty good about the overall event coming here, and we're, we're prepared. We were, I don't want to say a little behind, but because of the pandemic, it, obviously, the event got canceled in Los Angeles last year, so planning got a little escalated. But I think everyone, including Cobb PD and everyone from public safety we're dealing with, are feeling a lot better, and Jack, you would echo that as well, with the collaboration we have now going with MLB.
Okay, thank you. I know we had some discussion yesterday regarding the expenditure the county will make to help ensure that we have a safe event.
Yes.
And there was some discussion about the economic impact and what would be accommodated in the county if we were to continue to have a similar pandemic scenario we have, that I believe was shared about a third of the seating. Even if a third of the seating was available and we had a less turnout, that we still would expect to see a significant economic return based off of the activity to book rooms and to facilitate the various events that will be here.
Correct. And again, we're all keeping our fingers crossed and saying our prayers, but we think that we're going to open with 30%, and we're hoping by May, we're at 50% and, you know, notwithstanding restrictions and stepping backwards that we're at 100% capacity with our games in June. Most of this audience comes from places far and wide, including globally, so even if we had a reduced capacity, we think the impact will certainly still be there. And then there's, there's one other thing I was made aware of, is I want to make it clear that, in working with Cobb PD, that the events, like Play Ball, and if the draft takes place at the Performing Arts Center, that, you know, MLB is going to be responsible for the costs associated with that, including any overtime costs for, for Cobb PD or security. So that is an expense that is on them, not on the county. So we'll continue to work with Chief Cox and JD to make sure that that happens.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Glad you asked.
Are there any additional questions, Commissioner Burl? I'm sorry. Commissioner Richardson, go ahead, then we'll go to Commissioner Burl.
I was just going to say, thank you, and thank you for that update as well, and just for purposes of, you know, it being a public forum, to kind of share some of the intentions around taking precautionary methods for the pandemic.
Yes, so, and I think we've done a really good job since last April of respecting and abiding by all the protocols put in place from the state and the federal government. And we've been able to operate in a very safe environment there with obviously, you know, the mask-wearing. I believe we're going to see that no matter what happens going forward with, with restrictions. I think people are getting used to the, to certainly masks, so we're going to start the season wearing masks and, and social distancing. And so, again, we're, we're going to keep abiding by what's being directed and dictated to us, and, and that's what's going to guide us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Burl?
Yes, thank you, Mike. It's good to see you today. And again, thank you for all your partnerships and community events that y'all have sponsored. A couple that are near and dear to my heart that weren't mentioned are the three fields, Chipper Jones Fields that we have in Cobb County Parks in three of our districts. So the Little League teams are very appreciative of the work that was done on that. And then we have a new canine named Brave that the Braves supported and contributed to. So, you know, the dogs are my favorite, so.
You bet. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And we look forward to a huge success for the whole season, but, and the All-Star Game in July.
Thank you.
And a World Series.
Well, we, you're right, I didn't mention those. We, we plan on doing some field renovations, obviously, into the future as well, and we'll announce in short order here some of the legacy of the All-Star Game and the impact that it's going to have on Cobb, because it'll be a really great legacy of some programs that will go way beyond just this summer. And we're working with Cobb Parks and Rec on identifying a couple opportunities there, so.
Very good. Commissioner Sheffield or Gamble, did you have any questions or comments?
Thank you, we appreciate your update.
Thank you.
And you giving us a prelude of what's to come over the summer with the MLB game. We are certainly looking forward to it and helping to create some energy that has been overdue with respect to the pandemic. It'll be nice to have that as a pastime and a way for people to get out and enjoy getting out and enjoying Cobb County again.
Thank you very much. Appreciate all your support.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Bill.
All right, with that, we're moving on to our next presentation, which will be by the Elections Department.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Hello, Janine. Good to see you.
You, too. I'm Janine Eubler, the Director of Elections, and I have brought with me one of my division managers, who will speak a little bit later in the presentation. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. If you don't mind, I'm going to take this off, since we're behind the thing. Just what we wanted to focus on today, our purpose is really to share with you a little bit about the 2020 elections and how they fit in with the history of elections in our, in our county, focusing on some of the things that, you know, this board has authority over to help us be successful. As you know, the, our policies and procedures are governed by the State Election Board and the Secretary of State and our local Board of Elections and Registration. But this Board of Commissioners does have authority for funding our operations, including personnel, so that's kind of where we're going to go today. We did want to focus on some of the challenges that we had in 2020. I'll start with our, our Elections Board mission really is a five-point, five-bullet-point mission statements, but everybody really focuses on that second bullet. And some people focus on the fact of accurate elections, fair elections, others really focus more on the convenience and accessibility of elections. So there's a lot packed into that bullet point, which is, they're all goals of ours. So we, you know, have had a lot of challenges in 2020 with the new voting system and, of course, the COVID pandemic, and that put a lot of stress on our operations and made it difficult to sometimes meet our mission. So I want to talk a little bit about that. This chart is the November elections overtime. So this is from 2012 to 2020. The green line are those that voted at the polling places, the red line are those that voted during early voting, and the blue is absentee male. And so, you know, it was pretty predictable throughout the past elections, and then if you see the ones in 2020, everything pretty much shuffled around. And 2012 to 2018, the majority of people voted at the polls, but in 2020, 80% voted early or absentee in November. In January, it was about a third of each, third at the polls, a third early, and a third absentee male. So those, those proportions were completely different for us, and we had to really, you know, move resources around and hire, you know, temporary people to supplement our regular folks. So we had to kind of scramble to change our operations. And yet, we have still to prepare for Election Day polling places, even though we ended up not having the turnout for Election Day, we still had to do all of our preparations for that. We do believe that some of the absentee male boost will probably continue. I'm going to talk a little bit later about some of the new legislation. There may be some people that fall off, don't want to do that anymore because of some of the changes that are happening, but it was already growing in popularity. We were already kind of girding our loins, so to speak, to handle more absentee male anyway, and we really saw that with the pandemic, that people really wanted to vote that way.
Were there any policy changes during these years that prompted any of these shifts? I know there was some discussion around absentee ballots, and that in the past, were they restricted? they restricted to just seniors or those that had a reason provided as to why they requested it, or?
We've had what is called, I'm sorry, we've had what is called no excuse absentee voting since 2012. So this chart is all with a free access to absentee mail voting. There, you know, you've heard probably in the news that that's been an issue that's been discussed at the Capitol. And at this point, the no excuse absentee voting is not really on the chopping block. Of course, anything could be added at any point, but right now it is still going to be available to every voter, not just elderly and disabled voters. So that's why I say we, people really did enjoy voting at home, even though there was a health crisis that caused that. I think we got a lot of good feedback from people who might want to continue doing that.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so this, this chart, I'm all full of charts here, so I'll try and explain this one. This is a comparison of registered voters versus our employee positions. So the mountains sort of in the background there, that's the rise in active registered voters over time for, from 2008 to 2021. And it really was pretty steady up until 2016, when the state started automatic voter registration through the Department of Driver Services. So people were able, every transaction at Driver Services basically resulted in a registration update or a new registration. And so registrations climbed, you know, exponentially. And we realized that we were behind in positions. We, you know, our lowest point of positions, if you look at the blue ones, those are our full times, and the red is, goes up to all of our seasonal positions and part-time. Our lowest point was 2016, when we had 20 full-time people and a total of 130 positions altogether. And so we were, we were scrambling at that point, and this commissioner, commission gave us a couple more, you know, positions. We got up to 26 today, full-time positions, and we have 179 total positions. But that increase is not keeping up with registration. Registration has risen 56% in that time period, and our number of employee positions has been increased by 28%. So another point to make is of our 179 positions, we currently have over 40 of them that are vacant. And that's something I'm going to talk a little bit about in the area of retention and recruiting that I would like to bring up as well a little bit later. Oops, didn't go. There it goes. All right, just so you know where we are in budget, these are our adopted budgets over the last few years, I guess it's about 10 years. And you can see that we have our highest budget ever at this point in FY '21 at 5.2 million, which is great. It's certainly, you know, been increasing quite a bit in the last few years, but we were very flat for a long time, so. And our budget this cycle has been supplemented somewhat from grants. You know, we had the CARES grant, and we had some other third-party grants, some from the state. So that budget, looking at just the adopted budget, I wanted to show you how that compares to the other metros. Now their budget is done on a calendar year, so there's a little bit of, you know, difference in how we do our budget since ours is done from the fiscal year, October through September. But this is how it correlates to how many voters, how much money per voter. And I know we don't do that, you know, we don't budget by how many voters we have, but just to show that, you know, Fulton spends $18 and some change per voter, Gwinnett, whatever their number is there, I can't see it, 18 as well. And then we get down to DeKalb and Cobb, and this is actually the same order that, that each of these counties are in the number of registered voters. Fulton has the most, Gwinnett has next, and DeKalb has next, and then us. So we're fourth in the number of voters that we serve. And we're similar to DeKalb, so there is a similarity there. You know, I'm not saying that we're not funded enough, but, you know, we're, we're fourth in funding.
Janine, is this registered voter or voter-eligible population?
Active registered voters. We always, all of our calculations and everything that we do is on active registered voters. Even though inactive voters can still vote, we project all of our planning and everything that we set up for, you know, going forward, we always look at active registered voters.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, so I wanted to go into some areas that have been of some concern to this commission and also some of the public, and talk about some things that we would like to see, you know, to meet some of the challenges that we've had. Now, our vision for advanced voting is, has been for quite some time to have this kind of an offering, so that in even years, we're offering up for the big elections, 12 locations for all three weeks, seven to seven, Monday through Saturday. We would love to be able to do that, but we always run into challenges. And I'm going to have Bo kind of talk about some of the things that happen in his area. And then, of course, we have odd years where we have smaller elections, we really try to be around five to eight locations. Sometimes we reduce the hours a little bit down to eight to six, Monday through Friday, and sometimes Saturday as needed. Now, there are some bills that are coming through the legislature right now that are going to mandate both Saturdays, so even for the odd years. So that, you know, that may change our plans a little bit. But some of the things that prevent us from doing this vision is facilities to have locations for advanced voting and staffing. So I wanted to bring up Bo, his division is registration, absentee voting, advanced voting. And so he's experienced some of the issues related to finding locations, he's going to talk about that. And then I'll come back and talk about staffing.
Okay, thank you, Janine, and Chair Womacki, the Commissioners, for having us on. Before I get into the challenges and issues, I want to, I want to thank some of our partners in elections that, here in the county, because it's going to sound a little bit like I'm beating up on them. And I don't, I don't want that to be the case. So I have a list here, parks, senior services, libraries, property management, DOT, IS, and the Sheriff's Office. So without everyone involved in what we do, we wouldn't be able to offer advanced voting at all, nearly to the extent that we do for our citizens. So their help is much, much appreciated. So there's, there are three main issues that we have when we're addressing acquiring advanced voting locations to meet Janine and our board's goals. And they are, they basically boil down into availability, general maintenance, and then parking and security issues. With availability, one of the main things that we see are conflicts with prior programming. So we have great facilities here in Cobb, and everybody wants to use them, and we fully understand that our facilities are revenue-generating sources. And elections don't, we don't generate any revenue. These prior programs are sometimes booked a year in advance, maybe, maybe even more, and we don't always have the luxury of knowing in that timeframe that we're going to even be having an election, but certainly in the larger elections and general cycles we do. We also run into problems with consistency within a location. Maybe we have booked a room, we were on the calendar, but come to find out, maybe just before the election, we're moved into a smaller space, and we have to rethink our logistics and make some moves there, find different personnel, come up with some, some different arrangements. And consistency is important, both for us and our logistics, but also for the voters. They want to be able to know that they'll be able to go to the library down the street, both in the primary and maybe in the runoff that results from the primary and the general election throughout a cycle. So we're looking for consistency there. Takedowns and resets, and what I mean by that, we're sometimes asked, not often, sometimes asked to take down a voting space, maybe over a weekend, that we're not voting, so that another event can take place in the facility. The equipment is always securely stored, but it becomes an issue when we have to do that. Additional hours for the staff, it's the same staff that will be running the polls from seven to seven, or the advanced voting location from seven to seven, that will have to stay extra to do that and come early to reset it. With the new equipment that we have, there's so much more of it, it's such a larger footprint, that it's even more of a problem. So we run into these issues with facilities as well, and would, would like to eliminate that if possible. And then small spaces, I touched on this a bit, moving from larger to the smaller space, we're, we're going to need, because of the footprint, because of the new voting equipment and a surge in interest in elections, we're going to need the largest space that we have in these facilities for each election that we're going to be using them in. General maintenance, this hasn't been as much of an issue, but has caused us to get out of at least one location. We've had bugs, bathroom issues, flooding, just inadequacies there. Not only do the staff not want to work in that type of location, we don't want our equipment to be subject to that, but we also don't want the voters to come in and see anything but the best when they're in a Cobb facility. Parking and security, obviously with increased voting comes more cars into the parking lot. Often there are lines that could back up into the lot to create traffic safety issues. Many of the locations that we're already using have parking lots that are not sufficient. Additionally, I want to touch on the network capabilities as well. Our lines are mostly generated from the check-in stations at the advanced voting sites. So during early voting, we have laptops that access the voter registration system, and we're able to update the voter's information real time, which requires bandwidth. We're going to need hardwired facilities versus Wi-Fi. The Wi-Fi, we have an issue with the number of check-in stations, we aren't able to expand that without slowing down the process. We have used hotspots, but we found that to be an inadequate solution as well. If we're able to have dedicated hardwired network connections at these locations, we feel we'll be able to move voters through it at a more efficient pace and even add workstations to be able to do so. These are the, some of the facilities that we are currently using. And again, we obviously could not have advanced voting in Cobb without them, but some of these same locations at one point or another have generated the, the issues that we're facing. So what we're really looking for is continued support from this board to be able to make elections a priority moving forward as we go into, you know, county-wide election at the end of this year, into the gubernatorial cycle next year, and then certainly for the next presidential cycle. No election is, is unimportant, but we have to be thinking forward to the increased number that we're going to be seeing. In addition to the county facilities, we have, my team has reached out to the City of Kennesaw, the City of Smyrna, Kennesaw State University as well, to be able to look for partnerships to have locations within those jurisdictions for greater offerings during larger election cycles.
Very good.
And then we also, I will mention, it's funny, the Battery folks were here earlier, we are currently looking for a location in the Battery.
We missed that next.
To be able to.
It was on my brain until we started talking about MLB, and I forgot. We will make this happen. We will work together to support.
Very good, I appreciate that. Yeah, that's, it's a underserved location that would be able to, I think, draw a lot of interest in Cobb elections and would be a great partnership, so. That is one of, one of the avenues that we've explored as well. So here we see a map that details the locations that we would like, and we have some transit stops in there as well. My team has made it a bit of a priority to find as many locations as we can on public transit lines to offer the accessibility that we feel we need to as a metro county. The red dots there will be what we would request for all county-wide elections. On the next slide, we'll, we'll cover, you know, the, the amount of voters that they, that they impact. Then all the others would be either proposed or even your election. So when I talked about the larger cycles, all of the dots will encompass those larger cycles, gubernatorial elections, presidential election. And so the, the gray ones were the ones that I've mentioned, I think that's gray, yeah, that we're, that we're hoping to get, to get that full county coverage. And then finally, this map is a bit busy, but I found it useful. We're looking at the red dots that cover the locations that we want on a permanent basis for each county-wide election. The dots would be voters, so there's tons and tons of dots stacked on top of each other. The yellow dots fall within a five-mile radius of one of the advanced voting locations, and then the purple would be voters that do not currently. So with our, our request and our dream scenario for all county-wide elections, we're going to have over 85% of voters in Cobb County within five miles of an advanced voting location. So do we have any, any questions from the board about what we presented?
Look, I'm just tickled about this entire presentation, and you're not all the way through it, because this is the most thorough presentation I have seen regarding elections since I've been here. The data is very helpful and gives us a clear picture of what you have been, or the circumstances you guys have been working through and with, so I'm appreciative. There's something I didn't see as you're asking about facilities, is that I know sometimes we use private facilities or churches for advanced voting. Is that not an interest moving forward? Do you prefer that all of the early voting sites be on county property?
Do you want me to touch on that? And you come in? So we do prefer county facilities as much as possible. Excuse me, we, we have had some partnerships with churches and private entities. The Epicenter in South Cobb, for example, has been a great partner of ours and is a well-liked facility. And the only reason we don't see it here on the map for the proposal is because it's so far south that it, it generates a wider, or it, it puts more of the five-mile radius below, like in Douglas County and Fulton County than in Cobb. So if we moved it a bit north, we'd still capture those voters. But to find the stability we need for advanced voting, especially if we wanted to offer it for all three weeks and a Saturday or two, churches often aren't willing to give up that much time. They've got other things going on. The pandemic year has been one thing, but they are trying to get back into normal. The takedown and setups that I was mentioning were in churches. So it, we'll go in and take down Saturday night, come back early Monday morning and put up, so that they can have their, their services in Sunday. And we don't want to, we don't want to interfere with the normalcy of life once COVID is on its way out the door.
So ideally county facility, but someplace that's going to allow you to have that dedicated space for the duration of early voting and voting day.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you, yes, I'm, I love data. This is good.
Great.
But I do have a question, and this, just kind of a question here. Has there been any analysis done on mobile voting for areas that have very difficult access, like disabled persons?
It was, it was a good idea. I feel like that they are going to write that out of the possibility during the legislative session. Am I wrong on that, Janine?
Yeah.
Okay. She'll probably, anything that I don't clear up, she can, so, hopefully.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
I'm sorry, you're not, they under those.
I don't know if this is for Janine or for the chair, but with respect to a location, what about the training center on the East-West Connect or?
I think that's a discussion we can have, and perhaps take inventory of our facilities here in the county. It's a large site, so thank you for sharing that suggestion. Yes, Commissioner Burl.
For the, for the locations in purple here that are not within the five-mile radius, is there, do we have the equipment and the manpower for two weeks? If we can't do the whole three and a half weeks at a location closer to these two sites?
Sure. Janine would like to answer that one.
I would like to answer that, just because that's pretty much the thinking that we have done over the years, and that's why our advanced voting is not our ideal vision, because we'll always cut down the time or the offering or the locations based on these stumbling blocks that we have. So that's basically what we end up doing, is we'll have less time at a location because we can't get the facility or staffing, which I'll talk about in a minute.
Is the purple up at the northern tip? Is the purple up at the northern tip, Canton Road and 92, or Canton Road to the Cherokee Line?
It's, if you'll see, the white area is really the industrial or commercial, the town center kind of area, and so there are not, no voters in there, so it's just north of that. And if we were able to get the KSU location, that is covered. And if we're able to get a Truist Park or Battery location, the other is covered.
Okay.
So that's our ideal, but, you know, each election, we go out, or each cycle, we go out searching for and making reservations at different places. And, you know, as Beau said, we're looking for sort of a direction from this board of, you know, is it more important for this to happen for elections, or for revenue generating, or for programs for seniors? And, you know, there are other uses for these buildings that there's always somebody that has a different program, and so what's the compromise, or, you know, what kind of direction do you want to make on that?
Certainly.
Unless there are other questions, I would like to talk also about staffing.
Commissioner Campbell.
Yes, ma'am.
So, why isn't the Whitlock or the new facility that we just purchased last year shown on here as a potential voting, early voting site?
So, they're actually on here on this map.
Nope, the last one with the purple dots, because that'll affect-
It's the center one.
Okay, that one kind of looked like the Smyrna one to me.
Yeah, the center one is really the civic center and our office. What we're looking for in the way of the civic center is because our office now, and even our office that we're moving to in 2022 or so, they, it isn't going to be fully enough for all the voters that go to the main office. So even the new facility, the parking is not sufficient. It is sufficient to bring all of our operations into one building, and we're working on the layout with the architects, and we're starting that process now. But with employees and the public, it's really not going to be a standalone voting location. We do have to have voting at the main office, but we're going to need some kind of overflow facility. And so, that center one is really everything that's center, the civic center, if we can get it, and our main office. Okay?
Thank you.
Yeah. So, I wanted to talk a little bit about part-time staffing, and I have to stop first to tell you about our part-time staffing, because there's different terminology that I'm going to be talking about. So our part-time employees, again, we only have 26 full-time employees. Everything else is done by part-timers. And they come in, you know, in preparation for elections, and they help us to do all the voting, all the absentee mail, all, everything. And we have some regular part-time employees, there's 18 positions that work with us year round. And so, that's our experts that we grow and we, you know, nurture those folks into being our regular employees. Then we have seasonal employees, and both of those two categories are in Kronos, they get paid every two weeks when they work. And the seasonal employees are sort of the second tier down. They come in every election, they become also experts, and when we have election periods, they're the ones that go out and become absentee managers, you know, advanced voting managers, assistant managers, they become lead workers for other workers. And then we have day workers, which are paper time sheets. They are like poll workers, where they get paid five weeks after the election. They work a long time, and then they don't get paid for a while, and then they get a big check, like the poll workers get. And then we have temps. When all else fails, we go to temp agencies. We had six temp agencies this last year that we were working with, and they're invoiced by the agency. And they, we pay a premium for temps, and I'll show you that in a minute. So right now, our lowest-paid regular part-time employee, thank you for shaking your head, starting pay is $9.88. The seasonal employees start at $9.74. With the ones that have been with us the longest, they have gotten some increases, and that highest-paid one is $10.85. The day workers make $9.55 an hour, with the highest ones that become lead workers getting up to $10.24. But the temps that we bring in just for, like, early voting, or just for, you know, processing mail, to help us with many more hands that are needed, they're getting $13.50, and we pay the agency $18.50 for them. And that's our contract with the temp agencies. So, we're having a hard time recruiting and keeping people when they could go to the temp agency and make more money. So, what we want to do is to increase our seasonal positions, and over the last 10 years, we have had increases. We try to make increases as the commissioners allow for merit raises. We give a seasonal increase to our seasonal employees as well. And so they've increased eight to 10%. However, the cost of living has increased 18.7% during that same 10-year period, so their buying power is reduced. So what we want to do is raise those positions to a starting rate of 11.16. It's still not as much as the temps, but it's getting closer. But what's stopping that, because the departments do have the ability to make those changes for seasonal positions. What stops us is our regular employees, which, again, are the top tier, they stay with us all year long. They have to be in a graded position, and they're graded right now at a 2P grade. And what we want to do is get a reclass on that position, so that they will be at a 4P position rate, which, you know, they're, I think that they, we can justify that increase in the reclassification. That starts them at 11.52. But that's what's holding up all these other increases, because you don't want your seasonal people to be making more than your regular employees. So that's where we are with that. Yes, ma'am?
Yes. Can you help clarify in those different classes of workers that you have, where the poll workers fall in? I presume they've fallen under the tenth? Are they also the seasonal?
So, poll workers are another type of part-time. They are a per diem. They make only a flat rate for one, for the day.
Okay.
And so, these are the hourly's, all the hourly workers. Poll workers are paid in a per diem method.
Maybe some help is needed to understand who is working elections. For instance, I just presume everyone who's there is a poll worker. And it wasn't until we had some conversations last year that they're actually staff of the county that actually manages the site. So if you can help just-
Yes, some of the issues, I'm sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
Some of the things that happened last year, for instance, you may be referring to this, between November and January, we had to reduce some of our advanced voting locations, because the regular part-time and the seasonal part-time are the ones, because they, again, they have the expertise of being, working elections many times. They become the absentee, or advanced voting managers and assistant managers. They become the lead workers on absentee mail. So when we were out at Jim Miller Park, they were leading teams and directing their activities. Even though they're our part-time workers, they become very valuable to us. And so they'll be leading some of the day workers and temps in the activities, especially in the voting system, the ENET, which is our voter registration system. It requires some expertise to really understand what they can and can't do in that, otherwise they could be making a mistake in the system. So, but the poll workers, like your question was, those are really election day poll workers, but many of them work as day workers, which is hourly during advanced voting. I know it's very confusing, that's why I kind of went through all these categories. So we are trying to put together a pay structure that makes sense to recruit people, to retain the people that we have, but we're sort of, we're hampered by the structure of pay for the actual regular employees.
Can you help us understand how the pay compares to the other counties that you compare the investment per voter to? Do you know what the pay is and average pay is in Fulton, Buena, DeCana?
I can try and get that information for you. It's difficult, because everybody calls the job something different, and they have, a lot of the counties will do it as contract workers instead of employee workers. So it's, we, all of us in the metro area have always been in coordination with each other, trying to see if we're in balance, and it's really hard to do across apples-to-apples with the other counties.
Thank you.
But I could try and see if I can get that.
Yes, only because I can tell you, I'm really disheartened, and as a leader of this organization, I'm just disheartened to see the pay that we are paying our employees, because again, we look at the programs that we're putting in place to address the pandemic and the disparity. We've had disparity prior to the pandemic when I see figures like this, and it's a bit heartbreaking for me to see this. And while I appreciate your research and looking at the 18% increase for cost of living, even the number that you're increasing that to, I'm just still somewhat shaking my head at and wondering, is there a benchmark across the metro area that, at least on first blush, looks a little bit more reasonable? And I can see, considering all the strain that your organization had last year, you know, people working under certain, more stressful circumstances or longer hours at these rates, it kind of tells, it tells us, tells me a picture without you even having to go into any detail about it.
Well, I am so thankful for the workers that we have. We have a lot of people that, obviously, they want a pay, because they're not doing it for free, but they have a civic responsibility heart, and so they do a lot of this even though the pay is low. And I know this is a familiar refrain for you all about, you know, facilities and maintenance issues and pay issues, and I know that you're hearing this from everybody, so I'm just laying it out there for you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So, next, now, next I want to talk about full, not full-time, this is really the leadership, there's some full-time in this. So all of these part-time people work under a supervisor who works for Beau, and she has an admin, and those are our only two full-time people that manage, you know, 90 seasonals, 300 day workers, 200 temps. And they have three part-time people that work for them as well. So there's a five-member team that does both absentee mail and advanced voting. And what we showed you before about the, that two-thirds of voters voted either absentee or advanced, or 80% of them in November, this team was stretched to the limit. And the supervisor is working through 800 hours of comp time right now. So she's pretty much gone for the rest of the first part of this year, because she's earned all this comp, because she was working many, many hours. But bless her heart, you know, she did the work and helped us get through it. But our goal is to split this operation, so that we have an absentee group and an advanced voting group. This is the group that does all the planning of the locations, you know, does all the hiring of the temps, keeps the temp staff daily, because sometimes they'll quit, you know, or they don't show up. And so, what you may have seen, you know, and I know that it's been presented to you, is there are positions that we've requested in the 84 positions or whatever for FY '22, I think the FY '22 budget, there's different departments that have asked for things. This is our ask. And so I know you'll have some decisions to make about the '22 budget, but this is where we're going and what we'd like to eventually get to, so that we can have a leadership team that's working advanced voting and one that's working absentee mail. And then we can split the responsibilities. What that looks like is a supervisor, an admin, those are full-time, an election specialist two, an election specialist one, those are part-time, but they're regular graded employees. Again, these are very important people. We currently have 18 part-time regular employees, and they all have a key responsibility in our group. And then the last one there is a fiscal tech one, that's a full-time position with the new voting system and with all of the supplies that we need for a paper-based voting system, as well as all of the ordering and bills and invoices, our fiscal tech, we have a fiscal tech three, and she's doing budget and doing some of the more complex accounting functions. And we'd like to have a fiscal tech one to assist her with regular ordering supplies, accounting, inventory, and that sort of thing. So these are the five positions that we were wanting to get, you know, in the '22 budget. And I appreciate your consideration of that when you make some of those decisions. So before I go on to the last part of what I want to talk about, is the legislative changes that are coming up. This is sort of my summary page of what we're looking for in, from y'all, is some kind of a commitment or a direction as far as facilities go, and, you know, whether we can count on the longest, largest rooms, whether we can get your support if there is canceling of programs that's necessary, you know, what's the priority? Is it the election, or is it the revenue, or the program? We're also looking for three full-time positions and two part-time positions in the '22 budget. And we'd like to get some information, you know, some help, at least, on the regrade of those regular election techs to, from 2P to 4P, so that we can increase our seasonal pay rates. Any questions on that before I talk about legislation?
Thank you. If you can just give us time to consider these things, but I appreciate you summarizing what your requests are.
Thank you. All right. So, the 2021 legislation that's been talked about in the Capitol, obviously, I've been keeping a close eye on it, but I'm not privy to all the discussions, so I'm going to talk to you about what I've gathered from the two main bills that are out there. The House Bill 531 and the Senate Bill 202 are the two big ones, and they both passed committee today. So on Thursday, the Senate bill goes to the House floor, and the House bill, I don't have a date yet for when that goes to the floor for a floor vote. So basically, what they're doing, and I focused only on the things that really will create maybe an expenditure issue, you know, or increase dollars. And so, the mandatory two Saturdays we talked about for all elections. You know, we were already doing two Saturdays for the big elections, but this mandates it for every election, so there would be increased cost for that, because we're not doing that today on the smaller elections. The public buildings must be made available. This fits right into what we were talking about. There is a portion of the bill that says that governments and public entities will make their facilities available for both polls and advanced voting, and they're adding the words that say "advanced voting," unless there's a significant need that, you know, hinders their regular operations. So there's an out, you know, there's, obviously, there is a decision to be made on what's more important, but it's encouraging the use of government facilities. And then for absentee mail, this is where there's been the most focus on changes. There is a requirement in both bills for a special security paper for the ballots. And we already have a special paper for the blank pages that are in the voting system on election day and all in-person voting, the one that is printed out at the polls. But there isn't anything security-wise on the paper for the mail ballots, so that would be an additional expense. There haven't been very many estimates yet, other than I've heard it's about 50% more than the current cost of the paper, printing paper ballots. There is a change to the absentee mail application dates, and I don't have a dollar amount, a dollar thing on that, because I'm not sure what that's going to do to us. Today, you can apply for a ballot 180 days before the election, and you have until the Friday before the election to apply. So that's a big window, and they're narrowing that down to 78 days is the first day you can apply, and the last day that you can apply is 11 days prior to the election. So with that compressed timeframe, I don't know if that's going to mean we'll need more people to do the work that we would spread out over a longer period of time, so I'm not sure what that's going to look like. It does also require that when you apply for a ballot, and also when you return your ballot, that it include a driver's license number or state ID, or if you don't have either of those, a copy of some other allowable ID. It also is going to limit drop boxes and- And this is interesting because, you know, we, we spent a lot of money on the drop boxes and the surveillance equipment that went with it. But that was all grant money, but it's looking like that's not going to be usable any, any longer. So they are requiring that drop boxes, if we use them, be inside advanced voting locations and that there be a person monitoring that, so not a surveillance camera. Did you have a question?
You explained it.
Okay. Okay. So there are some things that-
Commissioner Burrow, did you have a question?
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I just have one question. When voter ID was implemented, I don't know, years ago, and a state ID was available with a photo, photo ID is what I'm talking about. Is that still available for people to get at no charge and how do they, you know, at the state level or can they get that at their local library or?
So there is a state ID. If you, like if you don't drive, you're elderly or you're too young or you, whatever, and you have a state ID, you can get at DDS. And I believe there's still a small charge for that, but those are the two ID numbers that were, that they're talking about. But when they did photo ID back in the day, they, the other provision was that a person could get a voter ID just for voting from our office. And so that is a photo ID that can be used for in-person voting, but it doesn't have one of these state ID numbers on it. It's only used for in-person voting. So it will not suffice for the absentee mail.
Hmm, okay.
So anyway, we're, we're thinking of some other options for Dropbox-type things because if their drop boxes are only used inside an advanced voting location and then they have to not be available after advanced voting stops, then we have three, three days plus Election Day where people won't have a place to drop it off other than our office. So we're looking at ways that we can have drop-off locations where we actually man those locations. So that might be an additional cost as well if we're manning those locations. So it's a physical person there to take the ballot. That's one of the things we're considering. Because the other thing is the drop boxes, they're limiting the number that we can have. Even if we choose to use them inside an advanced voting location, we can't put them in all of our voting locations, which will just be confusing. Because we, as our size county will have five. That's all we're allowed.
You've got to be kidding me.
No, it's one per 100,000 registered voters. So we're a little over 550,000. So we'd have five.
This should have been brought up when we talked about facilities, but there was some discussion about those that don't drive and how that is even considered as accessibility of the voting locations. We had some question about it being on a bus line and I know you and I talked about that some time back with use of the Civic Center, which I believe there's a bus line there.
Yes.
It will certainly make it less proximate and accessible, which undermines the mission or vision of the department.
Well, you know, and there are, as this slide shows, there are three ways of voting. And so we have always tried to get that message out that, you know, if one way isn't convenient for you, then maybe another one is.
Yes.
But there is definitely a tightening up of the absentee mail method. Then the other thing that they're doing is consolidating runoffs. That would, the reason I put that in green, the little green dollar sign, is that actually would save us one election. So like last year, we had the November election and we were supposed to have a December 1st election for the state office, but because of the emergency powers of the secretary, he was able to consolidate that all into January. Because state law, state offices are a four-week turnaround and federal offices are a nine-week turnaround. So they want to move it all into four weeks. And they've got a method in the bill of accommodating the overseas military voters that allows them to do that. So if that all works, we, we could save some money on that one. And then it does, both bills do provide for early processing of absentee ballots. And we did that last year because of, you know, the sheer number of absentee ballots that we had. There was an emergency rule from the state election board that allowed us to start processing, opening the ballots, scanning them two weeks early. And that is now being codified so that we'll be able to continue that. And then Election Day, the things that are happening about that is there, there's a provision that if lines in a precinct are an hour or more than an hour, and that'll be measured three times a day now, that the precinct must be reduced to 2,000 voters or we have to add more equipment or more poll workers in the next election. So obviously that, you know, will be a cost if we end up having to do that. We're, you know, going to do all of what we do to try and prevent lines, but if, if it does happen, then that would be a requirement. Yeah, there, it actually says it's measured three times a day, morning, afternoon and evening, or three times it mentions in the bill. And so there will be some reporting that we have to do to the Secretary of State.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Let's say it's above that ratio. Do we have to make that adjustment that day?
No, not that day. It'll be before the next election.
Before the next election.
The next general election or what, I'm, I'm not sure exactly what, what election they, I think it's the, either the next statewide election or the next general election.
Okay. So it's more of just an election and now, like how we did that year or that election?
We already do track the, the line at the end of the day. There is a place on the forms to say when was the last voter processed. But in this case, it will be measured three times a day. And my understanding is if you fail at any point, then you have to make adjustments for the next election.
Have you been considering precinct changes based off of the turnout last year that we can consider early?
Yes, we're in assessment mode right now. We're looking at some of our polling places to see which ones we need to split or to move. There are some that, you know, we have to move because they're no longer available. And then there are some that, you know, are up into almost 6,000 or around 6,000 voters in the poll. So certainly if they were having to be split based on this line, that's three different locations, 2,000, 2,000, 2,000. So that'll be a challenge. Okay. One of the things that will help us is the next item. There is in code right now, a rule that you have to have one voting enclosure for every 250 people in the precinct. And so that's blanket right now. So even smaller elections like the city elections that are coming up in November, we'd have to meet that ratio. And that's a big stress on the employees because you have to test every piece of equipment before it goes out. You know, you, you have to prepare all the paper and get everything ready for those pieces of equipment. And it's wear and tear on the equipment, you know, over time if you have to keep doing that. So they did listen to the election officials across the state that said, that doesn't make sense for all elections. So the change that they're doing in this, these bills is to reduce that so that it is only for the statewide general elections that that requirement is there. And that for other elections, it's up to the discretion of the superintendent based on people who have already voted early, you know, based on the track record of that type of election, those kinds of things that we consider, we would put out the, the number of pieces of equipment that's required or necessary.
Yeah. Is the county bearing the full cost of purchasing all of the election equipment and supplies? Or?
The equip, the original equipment, of course, was a state contract that was paid for by the state. And we will be looking at, my understanding is, a governmental agreement that will be coming probably before this board as soon as the state does it, that gives us a contract relationship with, you know, keeping the maintenance of those pieces of equipment up to date and such. But all of the peripheral things, all of the, we spent a lot of money just getting up to, you know, being able to put everything on a piece of, a rack which we had, being able to, you know, purchase all the extra electrical cords, everything like that. And then ongoing, we have all the paper expenses and the toner for the printers and everything else. And I'm, I have another slide that's going to show you that, but it'll show you what we spent as compared to other elections.
So if we have to get more voting equipment for these enclosures, would we expect to see that borne by the state?
So right now, we have this number for the current registered voters.
Okay.
But we would have to purchase any additional equipment that's necessary to maintain that going forward. The last item, I, I put that in there, it's not necessarily a cost. It could be, but I don't think it is. There is a, in the bills, there's a limit to people who go to the wrong precinct. Today, they can just vote on the top of the ballot at the wrong precinct and they vote a provisional out-of-precinct ballot. And if they're otherwise registered to vote, we'll count whatever they're eligible for on that ballot and, and we'll create a ballot for them. They're limiting that to only people, you can, you can't vote out of precinct unless it's after 5:00 PM. So in other words, you're going to be directed to your correct precinct. There is some benefit to that because then they can vote the whole down ballot. But if there is an issue with transportation or somebody has to go to work or a million different reasons, they have been able to vote a provisional ballot and at least have the top of the ballot counted. So this would only be available now after 5:00 PM on Election Day. And then of course, the other expense that's really not on here because it's larger is that we are going to have to spend some money on voter education because of all these changes. You know, we're going to have to help people navigate the different things that are happening. And so that'll be something that, you know, hopefully our office has the ability to kind of get that word out there with our communications department of what things are changing. So speaking of how things, how much things cost, I did do another graph that talks about the November presidential elections in the last 20 years. So these are, again, just the biggest election because that's really the, the one that is pushing the boundaries on everything. And the costs that we spent in the 2020 election, these are not completely final numbers. We're still getting some calculations together, but this is pretty close. And you can see that, you know, elections, we spent a lot more money. Some of that was grant-funded, some of that was CARES money. You know, everything that we charge to an election, we keep track of so that we can over time talk about how things change in the election world. So our, previously, our highest was 1.5 million for the 2008 election. And then we're quite a bit up on that one. And elections are just going to be more expensive now because of, like I said, the paper environment that we're in. We have a new voting system that's paper and it requires purchase of paper every time and toner and all the other expenses of the consumables. So I know that was a lot, but this is me and Bo and you're welcome to ask us any more questions that you have.
I actually have a question. Janine, with, with respect to the compressed timeframe, will there be any concessions made for those living overseas or the military?
There is, not really. For the application, no. But for the ballot, we'll have to mail the ballot out sooner. I really didn't touch on that part. I was talking about the application timeframe. There won't be any special concession for applying. But for us mailing out the ballot, that also was changed. Today, we mail out the ballots 40, between 49 and 45 days before the election to the military and overseas. That will continue, but we will not be able to mail out the ballots to regular voters until 28 days before the election. So a lot of mail will go out at the same time and it'll be four weeks before the election day when that goes out.
Any other questions? Commissioner Burrow?
For this past year's election, the spike, because of COVID with the, you know, screens and the PP that was purchased and all that, do you have any idea what amount was spent due to COVID-related items?
Well, and I could probably get that from my, my fiscal person that I was telling you about earlier. I don't have that right now, but you're right, a lot of this was one-time expense. A lot of it, you know, was COVID, some of it was handled by CARES funds. But that's just what was spent on November. You know, it's not necessarily a hit to our budget at that amount.
Right.
Yeah. In fact, our budget, we might actually be less than our 5.2 when we get all said and done because we had so much grant money and CARES money and things like that.
Very good. Commissioner, any questions?
I have a question about some of the technology challenges we had last year and some of the precincts opening later. I've heard it was just harder to start machines and I don't know the process to get them up and running. Have those issues been resolved?
That was in the June primary and, you know, you probably saw that a lot of that was resolved in August, November and January. We didn't see that in those elections. Mostly that was dealt with the high turnover of poll workers. When COVID hit, we lost everybody that we had already trained for the March date because we were planning to have a, an election in March. And so those people were trained for that election and were going to work the June election with just a refresher. Then we lost all those people. So then all we had was video training really, online training. We weren't meeting. And so people were just not adequately trained. And, you know, as, as much as we tried, without touching and feeling the equipment, it just wasn't, it wasn't sufficient. So they had some challenges with working with the equipment. And, you know, we've done some things to improve our processes. That was our first election with this equipment. Because we were trying, we were going to do it in the March election to kind of ease into it, but it ended up being, you know, in the heart of the pandemic when people just didn't have enough training for that.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Commissioner Gamble, do you have any questions?
Well, again, thank you so much, both you, Janine and Bo, for that thorough presentation. The data was certainly helpful to, again, help paint a picture about all that you've been experiencing. You've given us a lot to consider. I know I've shared on more than one occasion that elections ought to be priority, but I know this is something that I look forward to discussing with commissioners and also encourage you to as well, reach out to commissioners to see if they are supportive of the different things that you listed on the summary page. But I appreciate you providing context around those, around those requests.
Great. Thank you. Appreciate your time. Yes, Ben?
Can we have a copy of the PowerPoint?
Yes, I'll send you, I'll send you a copy of the PowerPoint. I also have like an executive summary that I'll send you as well. So you'll have it in one page.
Very good. Thank you.
Commissioners, are you good? You want to roll through the next presentation? Okay.
All right. Our last and final presentation is to consider information regarding boards and authorities.
Good afternoon. Debbie Blair with the County Attorney's Office and Pam Avery, County Clerk. We're here today regarding the appointment process for the various Cobb boards and authorities. For the many boards that are a one-to-one appointment, obviously, there's no concern as far as that process. However, a question has recently arose regarding the process when the appointments are unequal or less than the number of board members. Before we get to the current rule, the handout that I gave you, I want to point out, of course, that we have-
How many boards?
About 49, I'll tell you.
Forty-nine. And a lot of them have different processes. So, if we reach some kind of consensus, it still is not going to address all of the various appointments that have to be made by this board. The rule that I handed out to you is from our BOC Rules of Procedure. And it states that when appointments are necessary, the appointments shall be done by rotation or some other manner. I think Pam sent to you all yesterday the number of boards that have unequal or less than the number of board members. And I think that was about 15 boards that have unequal appointment processes. So, really, the question that's before you all today is, what is the process? Or, as referred to in Section 1.10.01, what is the rotation or some other manner? What does that look like? I don't have the answer for you all.
I don't know, do you want to add anything further before we?
Sorry.
What I had, I actually sent out something, I believe it was early March, to each of you that listed all of the boards and authorities that dealt with full-board appointments that were expiring March 31st or previous to now. So, I had sent all of that information out. It gave you the names of those people. So, I think it affects seven boards currently. And then, since then, I gave you, like, a full listing of all of your full boards and appointments that does not have an exact process of how to name people. And then, last night, what Debbie mentioned, I went back at the request of Commissioner Gamble, and I pulled those boards, I think it came out to, like, 14, 14 or 15, that I sent you. I went back and looked to see who generated those agenda items, who did the appointment. The majority of those you will see are Chairman Boyce. He spearheaded that, along with his Commission Assistant, Millie Rogers. I mean, I think they really took ownership of that and tried to have as good a process as they could put together and get consensus from the board to move those board appointments forward. But there were certainly some that you can see that that wasn't always the case. There was district commissioners that made those appointments. So, you see, it was a handwritten thing that I just listed out, who brought that agenda item forward. Of course, that also meant that you voted on it as a full board, but that was who actually submitted the agenda item. So, you know, I think one of the things that got us started was particular to the Development Authority, because we know that that was an uneven board. So, we were trying to establish how that board was created. And as you can see from the handwritten note that I gave you, there was certainly, you know, some unevenness about how that board has been appointed to over the years. So, we're just looking, you know, we're happy to help you with that. You know, we'll move forward with the direction that you give us, try to answer as, you know, many questions as we can. I think Bill even indicated it in an email to you that, you know, each one of these boards and authorities are so different in their composition, they're different in how they were created. So, you know, I think a path forward, we can try and work towards a process, but I do think it's probably going to require an individual resolution for each board, if that's, you know, your wish or the board's desire to move forward in that process.
Thank you, Pam. Most certainly, the most pressing authority we have before us is the Development Authority, because it has resulted in there being an uneven amount of people or commissioners that have been making appointments. And I don't know how we came to the constitution of the board that we have in the past, other than what's been shared anecdotally, you know, from commissioner to commissioner, about them taking turns to provide appointments. And then, it became an ownership about that. And so, to help provide some sense of fairness about it, with us being five commissioners and there being seven people on that authority, I thought, let's go ahead and identify at least five of those positions to be associated with each member of the board. And then, the board collectively come together, and with some consensus, I would put forward the name for the last two positions on the agenda. However, I do like the process that Chairman Boyce did have. Then, when he did put forward someone, he would send that out via email to everyone. And then, commissioners would respond back if they were in support, or they would share if they had someone else they also wanted to be considered. And then, we would consider that before he did make his submission for that agenda item. So, I think from speaking to commissioners, that there seems to be overall support for that to be the process moving forward for the Development Authority. I have not had discussion with commissioners about any other authority, because that has been the main one of issues. We know that we have an agenda item today, actually, for another board, which is our Library Board. It is not a BOC appointment board, but we did realize that there was an imbalance with one commissioner only having one appointment, and the other commissioners having two. And so, we'll be voting on that today. So, I think with at least the BOC appointments, that may be a place to start, should they become issues again. This board typically has not had an issue with BOC appointments, except for the Development Authority. And I remember, even when I started in 2013, it was something that was written up in the paper. And then, when there are other appointments in later years, it was written up. So, it's just, I think it's overdue, at least for this particular authority, for us to have a process or resolution that identifies the manner of which we'll move forward, because it's becoming clear to us that the rotation manner of making appointments is not going to work for the board.
I don't know if anybody else wants to add any comments to that. Yes, go ahead, Commissioner.
Sure, so, for the Development Authority, I can feel comfort with that kind of arrangement. Regarding some of the other boards, I think, for me, when I think about the Pension Board or just some of the others where there has to be collective agreement, yeah, I'm fine with the chair putting forward. It's just, I know several of us did do the application process, where we vetted many candidates for some of those positions. And so, what I'm thinking is future forward, right? Like, maybe you could put someone forward, and we would be able to add in who else we want considered.
Certainly.
But everyone may not be ready at the exact same time. So, perhaps we can implement some type of triggering event where we would know a position is vacant. And at that point in time, it would be communicated to everyone. And then, if there's maybe a month in advance before that vacancy, and that's when it would trigger us submitting who we recommend for that seat, by which all of us can confer for that particular, and it's not for everyone, it's for the ones that are in this unique case, but allow us the opportunity to consider all of those individuals for that seat.
And typically, I know there's some correspondence that the Clerk's Office will send. So, we should all have known, for instance, for the Civil Service Board, that someone's term was expiring. I think that was communicated. And I think that has typically been the case, that when we have, when we're approaching expiration of a position, that you will send something out, if that's within our district or by way of the Board of Commissioners.
Yes, we can certainly do that. I mean, and I think we maybe not have been as consistent in the practice, but definitely when, you know, we're reminded of something, or someone lets us know. But we can certainly, you know, make that a practice, so that we're reviewing those boards. And then, also, something to keep in mind with our current system, we actually did a training session back, I think, the very first week of January with all of the new assistants and, you know, the assistants that were already in place, and actually showed them how to run reports in our system, so they do have that available. So, I mean, certainly, we are always willing to do that. But just know that, you know, you do have the capability as well to do it, you know, if you're just curious for a particular something, but certainly, reach out to us. But we can, you know, we can do that. I think the chart that I gave you was through March 31st. But, you know, just as quickly as we get finished with those, I think the next ones come up that we've got, you know, vacancies starting as early as May. So, it just, it's, there's kind of a continuum.
Okay. Very good. Yes, Commissioner Burrow?
Yes, thank you. In the past, we did have, it was called Board Tracker, and our assistants could go in and give us a heads-up of when we had a position expiring or vacancy or what have you. And that was very helpful. Now, we have to ask you to, or you may want to show the assistants how to...
Yeah, they do, the assistants do have access to that. It's part of our Civic Clerk system, and I believe we transitioned to that in 2019. And, you know, I think I've told all of you, I loved Board Tracker, but it was an old access database, and we were just at a point where, you know, if it went, we would lose all of the data. So, we were really forced to move to Civic Clerk, which does not provide as great a reporting tool as we would like. We are anticipating an update to that in the end of this year. But Angela did create a sheet, kind of a cheat sheet for each of your assistants, so that you can go in and pull the reports. But certainly, Angela and I are there, you know, we're happy to do that. Sorry, Commissioner.
Yeah, and...
Go ahead, Commissioner Burrow.
Are you on that?
I'm on that.
Okay. Go ahead. Okay. The sheet you referenced earlier is this sheet, which is different boards, but they're all Board of Commissioner appointees. So, we all have to approve these. And all of them, with the exception of the ones that are expiring on the Development Authority, the end of this month, have already expired. So, I'd like to see us start, at least with these, the ones that have expired, that are full-board appointments, to get those caught up. And then, as the other boards that we have designated appointees to, and it's an announcement as opposed to a full-board approval, you know, we can do those by tracking them to see when they expire or come up before they expire, to renew or reappoint.
Yeah, and I think...
That would be my suggestion. And do we need to do a resolution, like we're doing tonight, on the Library Board for each board appointment that's a full-board appointment?
I would direct that question to our attorney.
I'm sorry, would you repeat the question, please?
Yeah. It was, tonight, we have a resolution and a vote on the Library Board to make that even across the board for appointments. So, if we start, let's say we start with this list of expired appointments and that are full-board appointments, do we need to do a resolution and an agenda item for each board on this list, let's say? Or do we just vote on the process on how we're going to do it, and then make the appointment?
It's really how you want to proceed. There was a question regarding the fact that, you know, the Library Board was unequal. So, the question arose, well, how do we, you know, kind of establish it? So, it was, we'll just do a, you know, a resolution to set that up so that the number was directed to each of the district commissioners and then the chairwoman. You can do that for every single board. If you come to an agreement on the process, as a, I mean, it's really, I have more questions for you all than I do answers for you. But it can be done by individual resolutions for each board, or it can just be a practice that you all establish, and we could write that practice into the rules. But again, it's not, a consensus practice isn't going to address every single appointment, because there are just so many variations in the various, the boards themselves, as far as who appoints, what the pool of appointees can even be. So, you know, some of the boards require that it be an electrician, or an expert in a certain field, or a citizen, or, you know, it just, there's 49 boards, and I'm going to say 80-something variations.
Right. Continue. I don't, I don't understand why we would have to do a resolution like we're doing for the Library if we just agree and vote on the process, unless it needs to be changed in the policy or description of each one.
There has not been a resolution dividing up the appointees for the Library Board to this point in time. So, if the board did not want to approve that resolution, that's, I mean, that is up to you all. It was just a matter of setting it forth. It's very clear, and this will be the process going forward.
Okay.
But again, it's worked for many years without that resolution being in there. It's a matter of your desire.
Yes, Commissioner?
I just wanted to, to your point, that's basically what I'm looking at. It's not for the district commissioner appointments, the ones where they're equally distributed. There's no confusion there, and we've already been making those appointments.
Exactly.
It's these unique use cases where it requires the full board, the full board to agree on a particular selection that is not selected by the chair, where I think a triggering event, like this, this could be the resolution, if we were to write something, for unequal and those less than, or less than or greater than the number of commissioners. As a Board of Commissioners, there would be a window a month before the actual vacancy by which all commissioners and chair are able to consider or recommend someone for complete consideration. And then, we make a vote as a board on who we select. Now, we don't have to bring it up in a month, but it at least gives everyone enough time to be on the same page and recommend someone from their respective areas if they so desire.
Yeah. So, if, you know, commissioners are amenable to that, you know, I think that's a proper way to move forward. Again, in times past, it's just been a matter of cordiality, where the commissioners are provided a heads-up on who those BOC appointments are. But as opposed to a resolution, which kind of gets lost in the shuffle, and you still have to rely on somebody who remembers a resolution, perhaps, you know, there could be opportunity to look at the rules and procedures. And that's another can of worms, because I don't think that has been updated for at least 10 years or more. And at least, you know, probably used some dusting off. And, oh, Commissioner Burrow's got hers right in front of her, so...
Bill Rowland sent this to us last week, or...
But I think there's opportunity to look at processes, period. And I think at the end of the day, this is about ensuring that people are armed with the same information, so that they can all contribute to the board's function. And so, you know, my recommendation would be outside of a resolution that we consider something in there, because that has the rules that's supposed to govern how we operate.
Right, and it's in there right now, in some form or fashion.
Yeah, so then, what we can do then is modify that for just the BOC appointments, and then, say, for the others, you know, to refer to...
The individuals, I mean, the individual board rules.
Yeah.
And if I may, there are some other, there are some of these boards on here that, other restrictions or conditions that we have to abide by, like the Development Authority was created by the legislature. And, but the appointments are full-board appointments anyway. They just are not evenly distributed. And, I mean, that's how this whole thing started. But like the South Cobb Re-Development Authority, isn't that, aren't there, I mean, how are, those are full-board appointments?
It is a full-board appointment, and this is why...
But they're nominated from the District Four, or, you know, because that's their, it just pertains to South Cobb.
The South Cobb Re-Development Authority has four appointees by the full board, and three members are appointed by the Cobb delegation.
Right. So, three of the four board appointments, they've all expired on the South Cobb Re-Development Authority. So...
Yes, and I can...
Two years ago.
Yeah, Commissioner Burrow, is it okay if I weigh in on that comment while you're speaking? There are some board appointments that are geographically centered in a commission district, where I believe, out of deference, there should be consideration for a commissioner, even though it says BOC appointment. And this is part of the concern when you start making rules about what should apply across the board, because someone can look at it and say, it's a BOC appointment. And next thing you know, you have commissioners outside of an area trying to leverage that terminology that's in text, which undermines just the spirit of deference that you would think would be applied to that... applied to that commissioner. And so while I encourage us to have some, something in place to educate commissioners, particularly when they're new, I think it provides challenges. But I also want us to know that as leaders and as commissioners, that there are some things that will not, should not have to be written in stone about how we operate because there's a cordiality of how we work with commissioners, which is part of the frustration about some of the BOC appointments. And I'll share with you that, you know, as we start putting forward language, you know, with the BOC appointments that we said, we're going to say the commissioner has the ability to recommend because the full BOC still has the ability to approve.
Absolutely.
Because, you know, similar to zoning, sometimes you bring forward your case and you find yourself undermined by people who are not in your district controlling your zoning. You know, there are times and instances where you can put forward someone and recommend them as a district commissioner, and they will not be supported by the full board. So I think it's important, too, that that language is clear. But we just have to be careful about how we are writing things because at some point in time, somebody is relying on it. And what we write cannot, may not always reflect the nuances that are inherent with some of our processes. So I would, I would not want to, I feel uncomfortable writing in language for each board that's geographically centered, you know, as much as it's a consideration. For instance, the airport advisory board, it made sense to appoint Commissioner Burrow as the commissioner liaison that's in her district. But I don't know if it's a suggestion that we write that down for the South Cobb redevelopment to say we rely on that. Maybe we do, but there are just a lot of these nuances throughout the code.
I was going to share, as a new person onto this board, that's the exact situation that I'm in because there is a lack of explicitness, right? When you have the Cumberland CID, when you have South Cobb redevelopment, when you have Town Center, there is no real definition around those parameters. All you're told is you have to make recommendations to these boards. So I think that clarity would be very beneficial for boards moving forward, some kind of way.
And I see Commissioner Sheffield nodding her head as well.
And, you know, I just basically was going to add, we have 49 boards, and each of those boards are very unique in the selection process. But I think it would be very helpful and beneficial if we have consistency, and I think that's what I'm hearing, if we have consistency with respect to the rules and the policies in our selection process. And I think that may eliminate a lot of confusion as well. But regarding the, some board members having more appointments than others on a particular board, I think that should be equitable, with the exception possibly of those boards that are unique to a particular district.
Commissioner Gamble, did you want to weigh in? Okay. Any other comments?
So from this, I believe there's some consensus to move forward with the development authority with the five and two. And what I would ask is if there's desire to modify how we approach our boards and appointments, that we take a look at that through our rules and procedures booklet, but that we look at that rules and procedures, not just for this process, but that we consider it across the board because it's in dire need of updating. In the meanwhile, I do like the idea of, again, communicating with all commissioners when there's BOC appointments so that everyone has the opportunity to appoint someone. And this is an opportunity for each person to have the ability to weigh in. And around that construct, you know, each commissioner is encouraged to talk to other commissioners about their appointment and invite for them so we can have some consensus before an agenda item is made.
I have one other question.
Yes, Commissioner.
In our rules and procedures for all boards, is there a condition that anyone being appointed has to either live or work in Cobb? Or is that, we've heard that, that they have to be a resident of Cobb, but is that set in stone as policy, or?
I would think that it's board determinate. So I have seen that on various boards, that they have to have lived in Cobb for two years. I'm not going to be able to quickly find one, I don't think, but.
I think that should be a provision.
Is it a general, I'm sorry, Commissioner?
I think that if we're going to do a resolution or a vote, that should be clarified in all of our boards.
Well, we can't add any qualifications that the legislature didn't make for that board. See what I'm saying? So if the legislature created.
Development authority, but.
Or that one or any other one that they created, we wouldn't be able to make an additional qualification that wasn't already created. Of course, it could be the practice of the board or the practice of you when you make that appointment, so.
Unless, unless for a caveat, if they want to approach the delegation about changing that board or authority, it's not necessarily, I don't perceive it set in stone, but just know that that's going down a rabbit's hole. You don't know what you'll see on the other end. That board would even come back the way that things are going.
Yeah. And so for an example, the Cobb County Marietta Water Authority shall include one member from the Cobb Commission District One or Four, excluding residents from Marietta or Smyrna, one member from Cobb Commission District Two or Three, excluding residents of Marietta and Smyrna, and one member from unincorporated Cobb. So some of the boards get very specific as to that, but.
Yes. Some of these are antiquated.
No, no. This is a legislative, I mean, this is a legislative board. I mean, we didn't set that up. I mean, but to your point, I mean, we can't make a cross-the-board restriction.
But for the boards that we created, like. Neighborhood Safety Commission or Library Board or whatever, they should be Cobb residents. They don't have to live in the district. I mean, you could appoint someone that lives in my district, but they're a Cobb resident to anything. Or I could, you know, same.
Well, I think as Bill said, I mean, it's, if that's your practice, but we can't, without going back and doing a change to bylaws or the, you know, the document that set it up, we can't just arbitrarily add requirements other than a practice that you all maintain. If that makes sense.
Thank you. Are you going to say something?
I was going to say the same thing, say for the SPOS Oversight Committee. I mean, that is a separate body that created its own requirements for members of that body. And so we can't add just another one on to it on top of that. It could be a practice regarding your appointment, but unless it's, unless it's part of the creation documents of the board, then you can't arbitrarily now set a new standard by which every appointee has to meet.
So just for clarification, because I always presume that an appointee needed to live in the county. Is my hearing that that's not necessarily a restriction?
I.
Nobody's understood, but it's not.
I'd have to look at each one of them. Obviously, that would be the preference from a board elected by the citizens of Cobb County to appoint people that were elected, that elected them, so.
Yes. Okay.
So can we make that provision? Part, like the library board tonight, the resolution, can we, can we add to that? That has to be a Cobb resident?
This, this resolution that you all are considering tonight does not affect the makeup of the board itself. It's simply the process that you all are doing, but how you're appointing it. So we could not add, this body could not add that requirement at this point, tonight.
We'll just keep it in Cobb on our own, I guess. Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner.
So I know we don't vote in work session, but will you be bringing back something for consideration at the next agenda?
Yes, it's overdue. A number of boards need to be, need to be, have positions that need to be filled. And so we do need to address the development authority because that's impacting business of the county right now.
Chairwoman, I mean, those people, and for instance, the development authority, they continue to serve until there's someone else's appointed there, though.
Thank you.
So that not slow down that business.
Thank you. How about the civil service board? Do they continue, or?
I think there's only one appointment. Most of them are elected by the Cobb employees and.
The civil service board, the board actually has two people that they appoint to the civil service board, but only, there's just one currently that is expiring. But I would have to look at it individually to see if that person continues to serve.
All right. Because I thought that was a concern, but if it's not, that's good to know.
But I believe it's in most cases, if I'm not mistaken, that they do continue to serve until a successor is named.
Yeah. Okay. I know I've seen that specific language in some of the legislative-driven authorities.
The ethics board is the one, we only have one appointee since it was revised.
Yes.
And that did, that did expire in December 31st of 2020.
Yes. And I don't know if there's language to state if that person continues or not in there, but like I said, there's been, there's been a lot of positions that have expired, but because we've been in these conversations, it's made it very difficult to put those on an agenda without thinking that we're going to have World War III up here. So, you know, I would like for us to be able to start appoint, appointing people to the expired positions. And yes, I plan on bringing back a resolution regarding the development authority so that's clear and we can move forward with that. And everybody can make sure that their appointee is appointed if their term is expired. And some of us have appointments to make, but their terms for each commissioner have not.
And with the development authority, we can't replace anybody whose term isn't up.
Yes, ma'am. You're correct. And, you know, again, it's important, we have to do our homework, too. I mean, not everything is just going to be laid out for you. There are a lot of nuances with all of these boards where you're going to have to look and read the documentation behind it to figure out what's going on with our appointments. So we have our homework to do, each of us have our homework to do, to be clear on that. Yeah. Okay. Are there any other questions? Thank you, commissioners. This concludes our work session for today. And we will reconvene tonight at our 7 o'clock PM Board of Commissioners meeting.
Thank you.